My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone.
You know everybody, Mike Whelan, Chief of Police in Dennis, Jeff Luce, retired from the Red Cross.
Yes, yes, we have met along the way.
Okay, I know what she thought.
Baker, yes, I do.
And it's going to be a state from the Red Cross, of course.
Yes. Well, I think, oh, that's right, congratulations, Sean.
And you know, Pat is not going to be here until our Cape Care meeting.
Okay. Oh, you know what, you can call her back, that's been canceled.
I want to do it.
I'm not going to do it.
Okay.
Can we call her?
Do you want me to call her, Sean?
I'm sorry. Right now, we have open meeting, is there any comment from the public? Having none. We are having an update on our regional emergency planning committee, so I want to welcome our emergency planning committee, and please come up and take a seat, whoever's ever representing the entire group, and introduce yourself, please, for the record.
No, no, she's right next to me.
Get you all around my table.
I got Mark's notes here.
Is there any money hidden?
No, I was just going to look at his notes and see where it said.
Yeah, let us know if you see anything.
Send a check to Cape Cod Law Enforcement Council, but I don't see it there.
It must be a genie.
I did try, you know.
I know you did.
I did try to go in.
Yes, yes, we did.
Over there, they have, they listen to the beat of a different drum.
Welcome, and could you introduce yourselves for the record, please? I guess we'll...
Well, thank you, I just wanted to say thank you. My name is Sean O'Brien, and I'm the coordinator for the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee, and I want to thank you for your time today. We felt it was time to come in, give you an update as to what the activities were for this organization, this committee, and some of the, some of the good things that we've been working on over the last, over the last year. So I figure what we do is just start with Chief Whelan and introduce, and, and if you could just let people know what your position is on the committee.
Mike Whelan, Police Chief in Dennis, and co-chair of the Emergency Planning Committee, and right now, chairing the Subcommittee on Shelters. Hi, Jeff Luce, Men Star Electric, and Secretary/ Clerk for the Regional Emergency Planning Committee.
George Baker, Chair for the Regional Planning Committee, and Fire Chief in Nashby, and otherwise troublemaker.
That can be enough.
He saved us one.
My name is Glenn Beasley, I'm the Executive Director of the Cape Cod and Islands Chapter of the American Red Cross. I'm a member of the REPC, and also assisting the chief in the committee for major sheltering on Cape Cod.
Thank you. Okay.
The main reason we're here today is, and we've got a planned stop, but just to let you know that, you know, regional public safety things are still alive on Cape Cod. Besides the stuff you've been involved with recently, the little C-Med issue we have going on, if you have time later, we're glad to talk about that.
We'd have to.
Have Mark pull into his wallet for that one, to see if he can find a solution for that. But, but to let you know that, since just after September 11th, fire, police, EMS, public utilities, public hazardous materials, users, stores, providers, the hospitals, the media, 11 different functions as laid out in federal law, have been meeting on a regular basis, and besides just meeting, which is good unto itself, because we actually have relationships now, have been involved in a planning process that, number one, puts us in compliance, Cape wide with the exception of one community, puts us in compliance, Falmouth, that's right, puts us in compliance with, and they are in compliance under themselves, but puts us in compliance as a group, for the hazardous materials planning, prepares us for hazardous materials released as a group, because I think we'd be kidding ourselves to say that if we had anything of a significant nature, like the tanker spill in Harwich, it's a regional event, it's not a localized town event. It starts at the town level, control at the town level, participates regional event. So, we've done that, we're in compliance, our plan's been approved, and that checkbox is done. And at that point, we all could have gone away and met once a year to exercise the plan and renew the plan, but we didn't, because we all like meetings, and we all like getting together on a regular basis and fitting it into our, our schedule. We, we've gone further, and some of the folks here today can, can go that next step and explain it, but we've been grant recipients, we've been able to, again, do things, instead of each community buying a little piece, we've been able to integrate those grants so those pieces fit together, so we're buying things together. We're, we're looking at the different storms we have, and we've prepared through our incident management team, which we're the only one in Massachusetts, we're the only one actually recognized in New England right now, but we're ready to get together, get at the federal standard, and manage the stuff we're doing together, not managing it apart as we did November 5th, five years ago, four years ago?
December 5th, 2005.
December 5th, when we had the bad, the all of a sudden winter blizzard that we didn't know was coming.
I remember that, well, because Sean and I were just speaking of that.
And, and we all, and we all screamed for N-Star, and they heard five screams instead of one concerted scream, and they went in different directions, and we learned from that. We, we've exercised the plan, we've worked with the regional hazmat team. I, I think the, the biggest bang you're going to see, and the thing with it, we're the most proud of at the moment, is the regional sheltering plan we're rolling out. You know, we watched what happened in, in New Orleans, in Texas, in Mississippi, and, and saw a lot of miscommunication and misuse of a lot of assets. And we know that when something really bad happens here, whether it's a big winter storm or hurricane, we're at the end of the rail line. You've got to drive through Brockton, you've got to drive through Braintree, you've got to drive through Fall River, so we better be prepared, because those communities, bigger than us, cry louder than us, also control the, the line into us, we could be in trouble. So, so we're prepared, besides the incident management team, which again, has put, put us together as a whole on these large incidents, we've also started to identify our sheltering relocation needs through a plan that is, I'll say co-developed, because Glenn will say it was developed at our level, we'll say it's developed at his level, through the Red Cross, and our partners, the, the folks that are involved with the Medical Reserve Corps, and the animal rescue folks, and all of them have come together, to be prepared as a group. So when folks do show up with their medical issue, or with their animal, or with anything else, we're going to be able to work towards resolution, and I'm not going to say we're going to resolve every problem, because we're not, we know that, we're going to work towards resolution as a group, and with a, a regional plan, that puts all the players together. And that's, that's the big thing we're doing right now, you'll, you know, passing to Chief Whelan, you'll hear about where we're going with it, and the stuff the Red Cross is doing.
Great.
Well, I'm going to pass it off to Glenn first, and talk a little bit about the Red Cross, and I, and I want to introduce Glenn's piece by just saying that we wouldn't be sitting here today talking about an opening next week if it wasn't for the Red Cross and their participation in the program. So, Glenn, you want to just talk a little bit about your piece of the plan?
Thank you, Chief. Well, just for a little bit of history, just about two and a half years ago, on Cape Cod, for the Red Cross, there were, we served 23 communities, that includes the two islands, so you've got three islands, one of them just has to be connected by two bridges. We faced, in this new world, I think every risk assessment that the Homeland Security has, we have in some scale here on Cape Cod, from the pilgrim plant, to the ferries, to the airport, to the highway system, and all those things, the fact of isolation and those types. So, when you think about our community and the potential of those things happening, you don't think of New York City, but the magnitude of them, if they happen here, you're also in an island with isolation. In a community of, where we had at that time, about 100, about, a little bit over 100 volunteers, and we could shelter around between 600 and 1,000 Red Cross supplied people. Some of the other towns had other equipment, but that was the, really, the scale and scope of a small chapter and a nice little residential area. And then, of course, we all woke up to the events of tsunamis, and 9/11, and all of those type of things, and, and the issue came of clearly defining a gap closure plan. Here's where we are, here's where we should be, and let's figure out the spot that we can afford and do effectively. And so what you'll see here is, is not a concept, but a fact, it integrates all aspects of the shelter. What we're really happy about is not only is it the local communities and the county, but it's linked directly into the state, and now into the federal plan. So it's a smooth flow of capacity, and while we don't have it all defined, we can even see the path of logistics, not that they would just show up here, but a way to distribute them, and control them, most importantly. So, best practices, lessons learned, we've sent people out, gathered them together. The thing I'm happy about, the fact that Sean said we could come in here, is to, is to let you, as the commissioners, know that this isn't just looking for your support, this is telling you, this is now your chance to lead it. Representing the county, bringing all these agencies together, you need a group of people who can sit at the top and say, you know, we know what to do in emergency, and they know what to do in public safety, but you need that overlying, without the political issues, just the fact that there's a comfort zone, that it is an integrated plan. And I think you'll see that in the work. So you have inter-agency, county-wide commitment, common standards, each of these locations will be operated by all agencies the same way, in all places. The goal is to look at what your perfect shelter would be, and that is where someone could go to a safe area, you don't put shelters where it's unsafe, that they can come in there, when they walk in the door, they would know that they have public safety, and number one, that it's efficient, effective, and has high quality. Efficiency meant, from the towns, this has costed us a bundle to open up 23 shelters, EMTs, police and fire, and all that goes with it. From the Red Cross's point of view, it was very difficult to not know when they were going to open, who was going to open, and what order, and try to move volunteers to support it, and to do a quality job. And yet, we know the things on the edges, like pets, special accommodations for senior citizens, or folks with disabilities, all really need to be blended in to these shelters. And it doesn't take long in scale, that on Cape Cod, you get to 50, you have a problem. Children, senior citizens, some with medications, some without, and pets. So that process was built in. So here's the quick review. For this coming hurricane season, the Mass Military Reserve, which you may be familiar as the location for the Cape Cod Transportation Plan, if the bridges are closed, has enough equipment for 3,000 people. It's there, it's repositioned, it's located. If the bridge closes, it's also a state facility, so anytime that the government says we can use it, it is a facility to shelter 3,000 people, and the pets, with a plan for traffic and transportation, on the base, and then off of the base, and feed them. Then you will look at the six regional shelters, and the six regional shelters are built along Route 6, two in the upper Cape, two middle Cape, and two lower Cape. And the process is that if you think about the tiered function, each one of them, this will be able to, capacity will be just over 500 each, but our goal is to continue to fundraise and get each one of them up to 1,000, pre-positioned materials. And those shelters, in each one of them, there will be a Red Cross function, a common registration point, if you picture this, police and fire will direct the traffic, certs will guide them in to the right places and get them into the shelter safely, a common registration with the Red Cross, and then as people are screened for medical concerns, they would be moved to the Medical Reserve Corps, county-supported organization of volunteers, which we now have methods and procedures and memorandums of agreement between each other. People with pets will be directed to, not in the people's shelter, but in another area of the school, or in the building associated to the school or close by, in which the DART team, which is your new animal response team, another group of volunteers totally committed, will care for, register, secure, and return the pets in, in good order. And so, and could we do this in 23 communities? No. We probably could get the people and the piece parts in the plan, but to really support it and have a quality, is to bring people to these six locations. The third piece of the plan is the community shelters. These community shelters don't disappear, instead of being our first line of defense, now they are our second line of defense. So when the end is filled, through the Incident Command Center, we'll decide where's our problem, and which of those locations do we need to open up, and therefore move the resources in a very secure, quality, and safe way, and be able to support people, instead of just a little bit of, wherever they are, trying to figure, guess a little bit, how would you move people around, especially dealing with 90% of response is going to be done by your volunteer residents. Safety, training, protocols, all those things are, which is a little more complex when you're dealing with a volunteer group, who are, by the way, involved in the disaster as well. There's a couple other groups that have joined us, the Cape Cod Child Development stood up, because in our process, our tabletop exercises, it was identified that, you know, the Red Cross is in a childcare center, you know, kids can run around, we have activities, but if the parent has to go up to take care of the dog, who's going to watch the kids? So, again, here's a great organization, it's got facilities across the Cape with experts who understand how to handle children, and they're going to organize themselves, and ask for their volunteer, their staff to volunteer, to establish six mini childcare centers, so they can do that safe thing when parents have to do different type of work. Each of these has common sense, but you, the complexity of this is a business one. Liability, responsibility, cost, and then the, then stay inside the protocol of what your department has to do. And so, the complexity that the REPC has to do is to bring all this nice common sense together, and make sure that the lawyers and the finance people can say, this is really going to work, and it becomes cheaper than it was the way we were going to do it. And that's what the memorandum of agreement does. And so, if, that's the picture, on any given day, Yarmouth could say, geez, I've got a local fire, or I've got a certain condition, a neighborhood has lost its phone system, not its electricity, and I need to put people up for a couple hours, they could open up their community shelter, we have nothing else going on, we would send volunteers and support them. But if there's a disaster coming up the sea coast, the change in decision model is really very different, and I think this will give you great comfort, in a way. We don't open shelters, emergency managers do, and in each community, they did it on their best judgment for the information they had, which we found out wasn't consistent, because they, no place to consolidate it, so the IMT becomes very important. The second piece is that we know certain things have to happen in advance of the storm, and we would wait to start those until one of the local emergency managers said, gee, I think I need to open one up, which typically, just in time, not enough time to really establish it. So the decision model here is, the executive committee, when it reaches, for example, hurricane crosses the 25-degree north spot, right around the Carolinas, and it's coming our way, generates a memorandum automatically to all agencies that we're in step one. From that point on, the decision they have is do not open, not open. We are assuming, in each step of the way, tying to Incident Command and NIMs type of process, each step, we have to be in a certain stage of readiness, and that committee says stop, or don't open six, open three. If they forget to call us, guess what, there'll be six of them open and operating fully, even if there's no one in there.
I see.
First to be opened, last to be closed. So, that process of keeping this unit together, managing six quality locations plus the base, is really our focus here. It certainly doesn't undercut, or take away from, the community shelters, they're an important aspect. The middle part of our plan, you probably saw, over the course of the last year and a half, we've been, financial campaign to fund some trailers, and inside each trailer, there's equipment for about 400 people to be sheltered. They're just pads, they're not beds, but they've got blankets, and comfort kits, and some clothing, and things like that. But the goal with those, with those seven trailers, is the day after the storm, when you can evaluate, the IMT says, I have a bigger problem here, or I need to set up a bigger tent city, we can take 400 and open up four small, one, 400, add capacity to one school or the other, or if we had to, keep, bring seven of them together, and you get enough equipment for 2,800 people. And the element there is to give, again, the REPC the capability of having a logistic plan, that still won't cover...
The entire...
The entire population, but it will certainly get us to a different point that we can prioritize. So what you'll see now is effective today, we've got the equipment for not 1,000, but 10,500 people, located here on the Cape. You don't have 100 volunteers in the Red Cross, we're now at 700. About three-quarters of them are trained as disaster response volunteers. This past eight months, 37 of them have actually been deployed to 16 different national disaster areas, and that hasn't happened here in a long-standing, national experience. We've had 22 of them promoted to national disaster leaders, so they can go in and actually run operations if there was no one else around. So the process of our volunteer team just grabbing a hold of this and making a second career of it, has been overwhelming. I mean, they're really, I don't deserve the credit, they're just, they're a force to be reckoned with, and they stay within the rules. So if I was sitting here representing the Red Cross on One Spoke of the Wheel, my equal partner is the CERT team, my equal partner is the DART team, my equal partner is the MRC, Department of Health, and the IMT, and, and so I'm here, kind of as a, in part of the committee, but now I can collapse back into our little wedge called Red Cross and stay just focused on it and what we do, and do it well, and not worry that things can't be fast off.
Right. That sounds excellent.
We have some open issues, and I'm sure these gentlemen will talk to you about it, and some of it comes in mutual aid, and supporting what the communities want to do, and, but...
So now we're ready for next Saturday, and next Saturday will be the rollout of the first...
The 27.
Regional Shelter, the 27. And that'll be at the DY High School, and we'd like everybody to come down and check it out from 10 to 2. That'll be the public period, and, I can, Matt, I see Matt here, changing his microphone around, and I can promise him that this one will happen, unlike the tsunami drill. So poor Matt will have to listen to it in the morning, but...
And what time is this?
It's going to be 10 to 2 at the DY High School. There'll be, the pet piece will be set up, with actual pets being registered, important cages, we're going to run it as both a drill and a public unveiling. We'll have buses actually picking people up in the towns of Dennis and Yarmouth, and bringing them to the shelters, so that we can then measure timeframes for evacuation processes. We'll have the people's shelter open, and actually registering people, we'll have police and fire, and all the public safety units there, practicing for the day in drilling. We'll have the communications piece set up, including the National Guard comm unit, that can pretty much get you to talk to anybody, and we'll also have MRC there, with a whole Medical Reserve Corps piece set up, for the medical review, and we're going to ask people to come down and, and walk through and tour the place. We've mentioned it to all the police chiefs, fire chiefs, town administrators we've talked to, certainly you folks would like to have you come by, and we will take you through and show you how a regional shelter, with a comprehensive regional shelter, with everything set up, will look and operate in real time. And we'll even have food, so there'll be hamburgs and hot dogs...
And veggie burgers.
And veggie burgers there as well, so...
Thinking of everything.
It's, it's, it's a day for people to come, come out and see where they would end up if they needed to leave their house because of a hurricane situation, or, you know, some kind of disaster.
And I would think that the summer traffic will give you a good deterrent, so it will sort of add to your timing of how it would be to get through some sort of debris, as opposed to just normal summer traffic.
And, and we've been working on this now, it'll be just a year, actually, we started May of last year, started putting this plan together. We just learned today that we've got some money from the Southeastern Regional Planning, they're going to help us with financing the Conex boxes, 20-foot Conex boxes, that we're buying for each site, so that we can store all of the equipment, and the cots we have just got in the other day, thanks to the Red Cross grant that they were able to pick up. So we'll have all that equipment in place, and we, we've wondered over the year, is this really coming together, and how it's working, and, and we're, we're very pleased with how it's all come together. And we've asked ourselves a number of times, are we really, is this really the way to go? And I think we answered that question when we talked to our colleagues from Western Mass after the ice storm this year, and the number one answer from them was, get away from small community shelters, and work on a plan that gives you comprehensive regional collecting shelters, because that's the only way that you'll be able to support that kind of a process. And so, that, in fact, a number of, a number of Glenn's people were up there in Western Mass, and saw firsthand how that all came together. And so we feel very comfortable that the regional shelter approach is really the way to go, for the best bang for the buck, and the best use of, of our limited resources. So, we're going to give it a shot next weekend, and over the summer and over this, the rest of this year, we'll be rolling out each of the six sites, one at a time.
Well, it, it makes sense to me as well, because you're not sure how, as you say, how the damage is going to, to come, and I'm sure that in your dealings, you've probably looked at past storms, and their effect, even going back in many years, where they've hit, and how they've hit, and, and the impact has been different, I'm sure, throughout the various parts of the Cape.
We really use the December 5th, 2005 storm as almost a benchmark, because what we saw in the outer Cape was completely different than what we saw in the upper Cape.
Right. Probably blue sky.
Absolutely. And, and what was amazing was, at that time, if we had to do a calculation, and this, this shows how far Red Cross has come, and how much help they've been, we, we calculated, we only had about 650, maybe, maybe 1,000 tops, cots, for all of Cape Cod. And since that time, Red Cross has really built, and, and made such a, such an effort to try to bolster our resources, and have done a wonderful job as our, as our partner with this. So, so that storm really is, is the, is the one that sticks out. I think what's important to also realize, too, is this plan, when it, when it is completed and finished, will be the only one like it in the Commonwealth at the time. Nobody else has moved forward with a, with a regional plan. One of the nice things about working here in the Cape, and working with the communities here, is we're used to working with each other, where, you know, some of the towns that were affected by the Worcester Ice Storm, may not have opened up a shelter in 20, 30 years, and had no clue who their emergency manager may have been next door. And so, we, we've really been able to put together a nice, a nice program, and are looking to put together a nice, a nice plan, that I think what we're also going to see, and what we've started to get inklings, is our, our even state agencies looking at what we're doing, and maybe pulling pieces out, and, and utilizing sections of it for even larger shelters that might be done on a state level. So it's, it's, it has been a very, very worthwhile effort, and what it also is doing is, it's, it's potentially saving the town money when it comes to opening up shelters, and, you know, and it's allowing us to, to make sure we have these six safe locations across the area. Another thing that this committee has really been instrumental in doing, and just so Jeff Luce, we, to bring Jeff Luce into the picture here, is, this group has really done well meeting in regards to our utility issues, and, and what to do after storm events and everything. It's been really an, an effort, and Jeff has been fantastic in, in getting N-Star more involved in our regional efforts, and trying to stop problems before they happen. And maybe Jeff would want to make a few comments about what's, what N-Star is up to these days.
Sean, thank you very much. This is really very serendipitous today, because N-Star is doing an internal drill, and I notified all the chiefs and the emergency managers last, this previous Monday, that this drill will be taking place internally. And what N-Star is doing today is gearing up on a test basis, all their communication links, that we have an incident commander, we have operations section chiefs, we have logistics chiefs, and although we don't have ICS finance, we have admin, pretty close, I'll take it. And what we're trying to do is utilize as many as the NIMs, ICS protocols as we can within the utility industry. It is not an exact fit, but we, we understand how well that system works, and so N-Star is adopting it, it's to the best they can. Today, we have probably over, I don't know, 125 people, system-wide, all pushing the buttons on a basis, and we're trying to kill our own system, if you will, to make sure that we can handle it if, if need, there is a major disaster and the Cape does go flat. It's important to note, if the Cape does go flat, that that means the transmission will be down, and that would be the first item of restoration. So, we have an internal plan, we have people in place, everybody has a job assignment, training goes on almost year-round. A lot of it is e-training, so we've upgraded, we don't have to do so many classes, so all of us are getting much more literate, and we all practice our pieces. I think the most important piece for the chiefs here in the... A lot of it is e-training, so we've upgraded, we don't have to do so many classes, so all of us are getting much more literate. And we all practice our pieces. I think the most important piece for the chiefs here in the Cape and the REPC is I now have the capability to help them prioritize their police and fire calls, which has always been an issue forever and ever and a day, that I have to stand by a wire, I have a tree down, I have a school bus's wires down. They have direct linkage to me, I help them prioritize, I can now input their calls directly into the NSTAR dispatch system. And when I input one of their calls, it goes to the top of dispatch priority.
Great.
It allows them flexibility to change their priorities within the towns. If they call me and said, I need this, and I said, well, it's not gonna happen because this, this, and this, you need to choose something else, or you need to take Plan B and let me help you get that done. So it allows us tremendous lines of communication. I found several unique ways to reach out to everybody, and I, my hats off to the Sheriff's Department and the Fax Department, those guys are great. They blast every dispatcher on Cape Cod for me, and I have a huge email list, and I wanna invite you if you, Mark, is alike, include you on my storm broadcast fax email list so you'll know what we're doing.
Please, that would be great.
That would be fine, I'd be happy to do it. I'm just, it's really nice that it just came today that we're here, and NSTAR's practicing today. I am not reaching out to the community, so you know, because nobody really needs to do anything. I made that one effort, we reached out to them, and what we're doing internally is making sure that all of our parts work.
Right.
And today, we're planning on bringing 1,000 crews, that's the tabletop drill. That'd be more than we ever had here in the Cape, I think, before, even Hurricane Bob when I was here. So I'm pretty proud of how much the advancements we've made in emergency management, too. And it all comes working with these guys from the REPC.
You know, to go back to that December 5th storm, as I said, Sean and I were speaking about that, I was, that was all in the outer Cape, and that was one of those days, my daughter was off to school, and it was kind of like a spring, it was a slushy, you know, wet snow, and then it turned to almost like a spring day. All of a sudden, it was beautiful, and I said, God, this is like, spring is coming, this is very odd. And then within moments, it became very, very dark, and I came in and it started to snow heavily. I mean, this was all, this was, it was so surreal for this to happen. And I remember going out to, to my back, my back door, and there was that sound, that railroad sound, and I wasn't sure what it was, and it just sort of passed over us very quickly, thank God. But it did hit many neighbors over these microbursts. Just to let you know, I did do my, my part that, that weekend because we happen to be one of the first to get our electricity back. So we, and I didn't know you then, Jeff, so I can't say I had any pull.
I'll take it.
Anyway, but I want you, I'll give you my address. But, but we did have at least 20 people go, going through our house that morning for breakfast and water. So they all kind of tapped into us and, you know, showered and filled up. So that was, that was kind of a fun part of the, the storm. But it was very scary, and many people were stuck on the other side. If you were up in Hyannis shopping, you didn't get home that evening. So it was, it was pretty bad, as I'm sure you can, you know, attest to all of that. That was a challenge, yeah, very unexpected.
But it brought us together, it kept us, it kept us unfocused, but the committee was new at the time, and it brought us that, around to that focus.
It's the, I'd just say, the answer to that, plan gets not more complex, but more people have parts to play. And one of the key things that came up as a result of December 9th and the after-action was, really, how better can we support the media, not just in the facts but in research? And six members of the media came together for us, representative of print, radio, and TV, sat in a room like a focus group, the TV was blasting and behind a mirror, but sat there and opened up of what they would need, what their expectations were, what they didn't like in the past, and how it could be done better. And most importantly, how it could be done in a common way over systems so they would get good, quick, accurate information to be able to transmit it over all of their media
That's very good.
At the same way, at the same time. And I'm not sure, in my experience, we've included them as part of the solution, but in this way it is. Our job is now to meet their expectations, but that was really a critical, and it, I'm sure it made them all feel that we're all friends.
Yes.
It honored the fact that sometimes they're doing reporting, and sometimes they're doing educating and, and informing.
Yeah.
And I think we really embraced that separation.
No, I think that's very important.
And I would tell you that, just to give credit, the citizens of Cape Cod and the islands have supported our campaign to do this, to tune about quarter of a million dollars of their donations. This past, a few months ago, the Walmart Corporation, we filed for a grant, and they gave us $72,000 to be able to do another 1,000 people across the Cape. We still have some to go. It's not government money, Red Cross does not take tax money, doesn't take any government money. Chartered by Congress, we receive no money from Congress. So this is really a result of private foundations and private donors buying into a reasonable plan, and if, I think they're being gentle on the REPC, it would be an easy thing to escape from if the REPC did not exist with the structure it is. If you remember, you have a commitment, it's run extremely professionally, and there's a lot of accountability. So I'm not sure, I know George has mentioned, he worries about its initial intent and how it's become such a critical management agency, not just a planning agency. And that might be something in the future you wanna look at. As one agency, if they have responsibility, then give them the common power. And it certainly has been a unified approach.
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
How does the IC, when I took the ICS training, there was some definite guidelines as far as setting up. Does the REPC now assume the ICS role?
Well, what we've done, and I wrote a little note at the bottom here, is the local community remains the incident commander. And because we're 351 cities and towns, 372 fire departments, 17, whatever we are in Cape Cod, they still have the local control. But what we've done is we've taken up one portion of the national ICS system, multi-agency coordination center, and similar to an EOC but not an EOC, and worked that and partnered with the sheriff in the mass military reservation, and prepared a one-stop shopping, not for decision-making but for decision filtering and information passing on. So again, Orleans is calling for five NSTAR trucks, Brewster's calling for 10 NSTAR trucks, Eastham's stopping them in the middle because they want their light turned on, they're coming from Provincetown after doing another one. We have a common place now that can filter the information, look at the 911 history, because 911 comes, a lot of it comes into the sheriff, and say to Jeff, Jeff, we are, we are getting more information that there's trouble in Orleans. There is trouble in Brewster, but they're able to prioritize, and we're able to pass that information on.
Right.
Not to take away from the incident commander, but to be that filtering so Jeff gets the right information. And, oh, by the way, Brewster, Provincetown, and Orleans, nothing is going on in Falmouth Sandwich, Born and Mashpee. There's help available because a lot of times Hurricane Bob, if you remember, Catuitt, Mashpee, and the Falmouth Shore was just devastated. And by day three, we're, we're looking for Mass Pike, and we're looking for all that other stuff, and Roy Jones is saying, but George, why aren't you calling us? We didn't get hit. Well, now with that multi-agency coordination center, they can do hourly, minute-to-minute situational awareness that wasn't there before.
Right.
That we can have that situational awareness to know that, wow, this is really Capewide, and we need to push the big button and call for MEMA or for FEMA. Or, you know, Chief in Dennis, we know you have a really big issue in Dennis, it's only in Dennis. Your partners are here to help you.
Right.
Because a lot of times we'll go, man, if I'm getting whopped by this storm, everyone else is, I'm not gonna ask for help, and nor am I listening if they're busy.
Right.
Because I've shut my scanner off because I have to focus on Mashpee.
Right.
So we, we are able to take that ICS role and use some of the bigger coordinating pieces, knowing that the, the incident commander, and it's the one challenge we have, and it's the one thing, I, I put my foot down in every meeting when we start getting into running the incident. We don't run incidents.
Right.
We're, we're, we're not the public safety director, we're not, have that public safety function. The local jurisdiction runs it. The local jurisdiction can opt, and we will push them to opt for a multi-agency or a unified command. That day, it might have been best to, someone to take Chief Jones, and at that time Chief Edwards, and bring them out to Route 6 and say, stand together, make your decisions together because your decision is affecting the other incident. So you need to make decisions together and understand that you're both in trouble, you gotta work together. Or, or if it's a wildfire or a police, you know, we're able to bring those together. And already have, the key part is already have the relationships established. Now, we have, we meet in Dennis at the police station in their conference room, and we are soon to be looking for a new meeting place because we're standing alone. That many people are.
Wow.
Are voting members, are active participants, again, public health, public safety, public utilities, special advocacy groups, the, the pet element, the mobility and communication impaired. All of those folks are now coming together where before, we may have even been adversaries when it came to some of these situations. We are now, you know, no, you can't bring Fluffy into this shelter. Now it's, yes, just take a left as you enter the door.
Right.
So we've become partners when in the past we may have been adversaries. So that's really come together. And, and through, you know, again, following, you know, most of us have had the ICS 100 and 200, which is the on-the-ground, putting the fire out. We're now, many of us are trained at the 300 and 400 level, which is, besides putting the fire out, you gotta put the other six fires out at the same time. And, and, and on that, Mark Foley from Eastham and his folks, Capewide and the incident management team, have been to Texas to help them put their fires out. They've been to New York to train with them. We, we are now on the list, again, recognized nationally, where if something bad happens, to go as a training component so we know when it comes back to here, we have those relationships with those national teams, which they didn't have in Worcester and those areas.
One of the things on the 300, at least the 400 series, is identifying who speaks for people, for the public. And I hope that, you know, you've made coordination with media, I hope that when you, you know, when you organize this group, that you do designate a person within that group that, you know, that is the person that's the, you know, that acts as a buffer, because you certainly don't want, you know, it's an interdiction by the, you know, by the media, however well-intentioned, because that does interfere with delivering the service. So that, that's, you know, I think that, that's an important piece and, and it needs to be identified at the beginning of, you know, of any, you know, event.
Absolutely. We, we are required from Superfund Amendment Reauthorization Act to have a media representative on the regional emergency planning committee. Right now, our media rep is Dave Myers, who is the station operator for WOMR out of Provincetown. Dave knows firsthand about the 2005 storm because he lost some power that day, and he knows how important it is for communications to, to remain during the time of a disaster. We also have made sure that all of these agencies that participate with us as a part of the sheltering plan also have public information officers. We have a trained public information officer with the incident management team. DART has a public information officer. Red Cross has a public information officer. So we can make sure that we all work together as a team and work through the central location, through an incident management team person, or whether it be through, whether it be through our media person. And Dave is actually assisting us with the, with the media contacts and everything for the 27th exercise. We wanna make sure that we have that information getting out. I, I think what's also important is also internal communication amongst all of us. You know, thinking about communication out and abroad to, to media, but also communication amongst all of us. One of the things that we've, we've seen really happening over the last year or two is we talk regularly in conference calls. And Glenn has been, has been very gracious to allow us to use his teleconference thing system. So last year, we, though we may not consider them close calls, we had some potential concerns regarding a few storms coming up the coast. And one of the nice things that we've been able to do is to hold a conference call where we, number one, bring in our executive committee, decide, you know, make some decisions as to, as to whether or not we're gonna put people in the, in the multi, in the MAC Center, the multi-agency coordination center. But also for us to, you know, look into the possibilities of, you know, any other services, are we gonna be able to contact NSTAR, are we gonna have to work with shelters? And so we do a, a quick phone call with the executive committee, then we open it up to all of the emergency managers. And all of the town police chiefs, fire chiefs, and I think we had one call that we were well over 100 participants. And we were actually, we've actually been, unfortunately, didn't have enough room to bring other people on board. And so internally, we're also getting very good at communicating with one another. And actually, I'd say we're great at doing it because, you know, I was in a town last week off Cape, and their police and fire department don't necessarily speak and aren't necessarily on the same, on the same radio frequency. And I can say that that's really not the case down here.
Right.
And, and we're pretty good about working together.
Well, what I think is a good aspect here is that you've embraced the regional approach, whereas, you know, you might have been adversaries, at some point you recognize that that's not really advantageous economically, nor is it advantageous in getting the job done. And, and I guess nobody really feels as though they've given up their power somehow, which is, I think, one of the big fear when people grasp onto a regional effort. So maybe we'll have to make sure that we use this example as we go through the towns to see that cooperation can be a, a very wonderful friendship-building and...
Especially getting the money from the state.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think the more we cooperate, the, the state, you know, is, it does seem like that cooperation and collaboration is what is, is looked for in any funding mechanism now coming from the state and federal government, if I, and I'm sure you recognize that in these proposals. So, Mark, you have a question?
Chief Baker mentioned it a little bit, but how is the sheriff built into the system, especially in terms of his communication? Because that's, I guess, where his central role lies.
Yes.
And it's a two-part question. Do you see, and of course with the CMed thing, this is an important question, do you see this changing if and when he goes to the state, or is that gonna be an issue?
I, I think, number one, the sheriff is key communication-wise because wired and wirelessly, all points lead to their pod at the mass military reservation. Everything leads to them, all fire departments, all ambulances, police departments on a regional role, communication-wide are tied in, they have their, their regional network. The other partners, the state police and them have ties in there, 911's tied in, and they hold, they hold the magic phone that was from the Cold War that says Cape Shelter that now says, send us a purchase order for what you need. You know, the Navas phone is at the sheriff's department. So, so we all feed in, and they have, again, thinking of a funnel, all the information coming in, they have the spigot out, too. They have the connection out to MEMA, they have the connection out to the federal government. Key, key, key point. The real key point, and I'm speaking for myself now because the committee hasn't taken action on this, is many of us depend on the sheriff. Mashpee depends on them as a vendor, they provide our fire dispatch, they provide our 911, they provide our county mutual aid to all the fire chiefs, right now at no expense. And we are petrified that the sheriff's request for money for the CMed is the first step. We're afraid the next step will be for fire mutual aid because it's not the care and custody of prisoners that the sheriff is mandated to do, it's something else. And we're afraid that the snowball has begun its trip down the hill, not disparaging the sheriff, because all of us are in need for funding to keep doing what we're doing.
Right.
Many, many, many years ago, we came to the commissioners as fire, with some police at the time, it was mainly fire and EMS, to say, this should be a county entity. And at the time, it was, don't worry, George, it is a county entity, the checks come through here, the control is through here. And at the time, and Bill may remember, Mark probably does, the sheriff was, whatever the statutes are called here in the county, was made the public safety director, he had a panel of...
Indeed, and still is.
And still is! So he has a statutory role for us, but we're fearful that the money and the nice lady at, at the administration and finance that is pushing the state control, because state control of money means what? State control of everything. If you control the money, you control what goes on. So we are very fearful of the snowballs, and again, not, the sheriff is, is and has been, and I'm convinced will be, our partner throughout this entire process. He had to shake the tree, I, I think he, he might have...
Yes, he did.
Could have done it months earlier while our budgets were still under consideration, and we might have been able to grab some apples. But it's, you know, now we're in crisis mode for the C-MED issue, it's been health, Cape Cod Hospital's set up like, but there are other issues, Mark, whether it be mutual aid dispatch, which we are the model for New England.
Mm-hmm.
We're the mark, the Cape Mutual Aid Fire Network is a model. Our C-MED's a model. Our, we dispatch for the, the state hazmat team. We do so many things the sheriff, I say we, but the sheriff does for us through the fire chief, through the REPC. There, if, if we went Red Cross at two o'clock in the morning, though Glenn has a number we can call, what do we call Glenn? We call the sheriff. And those people in a, those people in a, in a controlled environment can then get a clear message through instead of us doing it from a cell phone out in the middle of a snowstorm.
Right.
So, so that's something that sometime in the future, we're going to have to look at how we continue the funding effort, because in the past, it did come through you folks, it came through us, and we're fearful that by not controlling the money, you don't control where the money goes.
Well, not to, to get into it in, in all kinds of details, because we'll be diverting the whole discussion, but I do think that it would be important, Mark, to, we're due to see the sheriff. We were going to see him, and I think we have to get up there to do our tour, and we were going to talk about, it was a follow-up to your meeting up in Boston over the C-MED. And it's been held at bay now until about October. The funding is there with the Cape Cod Hospital.
We don't know if it's October 1st or October 30th.
Yeah, right, I know. So, and, and that will be here before you know it. So, maybe we should, you know, maybe have a meeting with everybody at the table and, and take a look at this issue and see what the alternatives are and, and how can we best address it so that that, we're not waiting until October and, and trying to be in a crisis again.
And speaking for the group, the model of the REPC has worked well. It started with hazardous materials information, which is now on a disk compiled by county employees.
Right.
With the assistance of local fire departments and, and local folks that are now available to every firefighter, again, through a system through the hazmat team, that the Mashpee hazmat tech has instant information to certain reportable quantities, be a lot or, or medium amount to a lot, of what's at the ice rink in Dennis. That stuff is out there.
Excuse me, we're just having a little hello from our state senator.
Okay, hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Everything all right?
Yeah.
They were looking for you, actually.
Yeah, they're, we have our emergency response team here, so...
We're good, yes. I can sit.
Good, okay.
We're meeting with the commissioner over when decided.
Yes. Oh, excellent, great. All right, so, good luck.
I'll let you know how you're doing.
All right, thank you. And, and thanks for your help on that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rob.
We have that, and I'd be remiss, and Sean definitely has some stuff to add here at the end, but the thank you to the commissioners before you and the commissioners now, they keep funding this program, thanks to George Hoyfeldter.
Yes.
And his leadership and the, the change, how many years ago now, George, five or four years ago, from, from groundwater remediation to, to disaster management, that Sean, Sean is a paid staff person that's directing and managing. I mean, not only is he managing the program, he's managing fire and police chiefs, which is like, you know, a cat rodeo, to get us all in a room and get us all going in this, you know, to have agendas ready and have all that stuff. The silent partner that's in the background, that's the county. And, and, and we would not have been able to do this without having, you know, we talk about the money stream, but having that small amount of money that's brought to our committee to do the management, to do the minutes, to do the, the cart reporting, so we have the hearing-impaired community participating with us and being able, and now that I'm more gray-haired than black-haired, I look at the screen, too. What did he say? And you can look at the screen and, and follow what's going on. Stuff that Sean has put together in the background that, you know, it's our opportunity to say thank you to Sean through you, and thank you to you for that support, and thank you for battling with the, the finance section and, and the rest of our pay, or our county-elected folks that make that decision, because without your support, we wouldn't be able to have this. We wouldn't be able to, you know, and without the, the vote of the committee making us a formal county entity, we wouldn't have the clock to go for the grants and to go for the things, and, and we'd just be a committee of chiefs, which there are a lot of committees, planning. We are an arm of county government that speaks through county government to get things done, and we really appreciate that. We appreciate it a lot. We appreciate the opportunity to take a half hour of your time today, or even more, to get this done, to be able to participate.
If you're changing the location, you know, you ought to think about, if you change the date, that would be nice, because I did, you know, I did enjoy, and I learned a lot when, you know, when you were meeting at days when we didn't meet, because I, and I think that the participation that you have from Sean has a lot to do with those beginning days when we were all talking together, and we, and we found out more about how we could all work together better.
Maybe we could get you and Chief Rosen to all in the same room with you, because he's the one that got us to move to this other day, because a police chief's, you know, we used to conflict with another meeting. So, and we're happy to move, it's just with, with thirty-two people going in different directions.
Right. It must be very hard to...
And we, we found a day that most of us could meet.
Right. Jeff, did you say, did you, you looked as though you wanted to add one more thing here before we...
Well, I think part of, just to go back to Mark, I, so that you understand that N-Star also has maintained a communication link for a number of years with the sheriff's department, and it's highly beneficial for me if I need to warn all of the towns of something that's coming their way. Here, again, I can just pick them up, they can hear me on the radio. If indeed I tell them to monitor, they can monitor. If I lose landline or anything else, we can converse with Barnstable County Communication Department via our radios, which has been a great link for as long as I can remember, and, and it's come in very handy. I have the same thing on the island that we, N-Star provides, and Mark's has been, you too. We have provided the similar same program for the island. It's important that, that the sheriff's department is there. It's been a great resource for N-Star over the years, and I really enjoy working with them.
Great. Do we have any questions from the media? I know you're here. Everybody's all set? Is there anything?
No, I just, it's like deja vu. When I was doing emergency response at Edison, we were in the Sudbury Police Station, so it's like deja vu all over again, going back to communicating with the police and fire on an interoperability basis.
Sean? I do have a couple of, a couple of points of business.
Okay.
Today, you will find in front of you an MO, I think, Mark is coming to them today, an MOU for, between Barnstable County Regional Emergency Planning Committee and American Red Cross.
Okay, great.
We've put together an MOU that basically outlines what our roles will be with the regional sheltering plan. So, you'll see that today. Glenn has already signed it, and it's, it's in front of you for your signatures. You'll find three, three copies.
Okay.
Additionally, I think what's, what's also important to remember is our hazmat component is, is also state-of-the-art. Amy Wallace has put together a phenomenal program that is also a state model. And the fact that we're able to get the databases of hazardous materials users that we have out to the fire departments on an annual basis, up to date, and with, and now, soon to be, I should say, with, with emergency response plans and, and drawings of how the, how the building is and plans, and site plans, et cetera. The state's looking at what we're doing and, and trying to emulate that. They're trying to copy what we've, we've had done. Another thing, quickly, is we will have a few more MOUs coming before you. We're in the process of doing one with the Medical Reserve Corps and American Red Cross, so you, you will see that. And then additionally, there will be another regional transportation MOU. We do have an existing one between Barnstable County and the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority to use buses in an emergency. We're looking to put one together with the school buses. And once that's finalized, you'll, you'll also see a copy of that. In the next few meetings or so, you're also going to be asked to, to vote on some membership. We've had some changes in some roles at some local town levels, and the towns have reappointed some new folks towards the regional emergency planning committee. We're going to just be submitting that and asking, asking for your, asking for your vote. Usually, the way, the way it works is we'll vote for them at the REPC level first, and then it comes in for a concert, confirmation vote with the commissioners, if you're, if you're okay with that. That's how our bylaws spell it out.
Okay.
And, and so, you, we'll be seeing that in the next few weeks, and I figured maybe in the next month or so, we may, maybe we should bring the incident management team in to meet with you as well.
That would be great. And it, it's also an opportunity to inform the public as to how you're doing and what you're doing. And I, I just want to, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of not just my fellow commissioners, but the citizens of Cape Cod, truly, to thank all of you for your efforts and your level of cooperation and, and working this out, and, you know, heck, I feel better, and just knowing that you're out there and that this is, is together. And, and the thing that's, it's very nice, and as you were alluding to, Glenn, was that if, you know, once there's a disaster that takes place, you can concentrate on what you know you have to do and not be worried about, are they doing what they have to do? Because everybody is, has their, their orders way ahead of time, pretty much. So, it's, it's a great effort. Feel proud of yourselves, it sounds like a great job. And, and of course, no matter what you plan for, you know, you can only do the best you can at that time, but it, it looks as though you're thinking about every scenario possible, and hopefully, we won't have to utilize you all at the same time all, all over the region, and, and maybe it won't happen at all. So, that would be a great thing for us.
Fingers crossed.
Yes, fingers crossed. But, you know, those storms are exciting.
That's right.
You know, as long as nobody gets hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and we'll sign those and get them off to you.